All righty, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, May 18th, 2015. It's approximately 6:30 PM. We have all members of council present. If everybody can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have our military contingent in the front row. Gentlemen, why don't you come on up here and lead the pledge, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the highest American, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next time, you'll sit in the back row, right?
I'm at the first man to sit this back.
There you go. Get here a little earlier next time. Chief White?
Good evening. Are we on? Okay. At this time, if you'd like to join me in prayer, please do so. Father God, as Memorial Day approaches us, we're reminded by those families who have endured and lost so much. As we look at the crosses across the Lawton House property, 391 crosses, all reflecting Florida fallen veterans, we think about our Oviedo Gold Star families as well, and ask that you comfort them this time of year, that you bless them, that you remind us on Memorial Day what that day is about and the sacrifices that were made. Father God, we pray for these engineering students that are going to be recognized in a few moments, and their families, and their accomplishments, and that you grant them health and safety in all that they do, and great success. We thank you, Lord, for the many blessings that you've bestowed on this community with the dedication of our new park and just a wonderful day. And we praise you and lift this up in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Chief, while you're up there, do you want to make any announcements of upcoming events that you have for Memorial Day? Because you do have a bunch of them, and you have a full crowd here.
That'd be a great idea, Mayor. Thank you. Yes, just a reminder, the Fallen Floridians Memorial Cross Tribute is on display at the Lawton House property. It's returned for the third consecutive year, and will be there through the 26th. However, Memorial Day at 9:00 AM will be a special dedication ceremony. As a reminder, this event is hosted primarily by the military support team of First United Methodist Church of Oviedo, and we're grateful for their efforts, as well as the Gold Star families from our community. And then, of course, that afternoon, the long-awaited dedication ceremony of the Oviedo Veterans Tribute at our new park. A lot of folks got a peek at it Saturday, but the special ceremony and dedication service is planned for 4:00 PM. I think everyone that attends will be glad that they did so. That's it.
Thank you, Chief. We do appreciate it, and hope to see everybody out at those very important events as we thank all of our veterans. We have one, two, three. Who else is a veteran in the audience? Anybody? Four? Well, everybody, thank you for your service. We don't get to tell you on Memorial Day. Next order of business, we have our ceremonial items. I'm going to switch them all around just a little bit, and I do apologize to the middle school students who are here, but we're just waiting for the high school students. I guess they must have overslept. But so why don't we move on to item number three, which is the Central Florida Expressway Authority? Is there somebody here from them? Good evening, sir. Just name and address for the record, and I think you have PowerPoint you were going to present.
Yes, I do. I'll put my name on the record, then I'll grab the... My name's Glenn Pressimon. I'm the Director of Engineering with the Central Florida Expressway Authority, and address is 4974 Orl Tower Road, Orlando.
Is that yours?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Here tonight, actually, exciting, the engineering students are getting a little kudos because I work with through FES and some of the local organizations. I get to work with some of the STEM and math counts, Odyssey of the Mind, and we enjoy doing that, so congratulations to them. I'm going to take just a couple minutes of your time. Appreciate you letting us come in and do a quick presentation. We're going through our 2040 Master Plan, much like I'm finding out as I'm doing these presentations, a lot of agencies and a lot of local governments are going through a similar exercise. But some things have changed for CFX over the last year. Want to share with some of those updates with you, and then just briefly leave you with a little bit of homework. Nothing for today. We have a survey that I've brought with me. We're going to leave a survey behind and ask that, you know, outside of this meeting, perhaps you have the opportunity to ponder that, fill it out, and return it, really looking for some feedback from each of you. Okay, so about a year ago, Florida Legislature recreated what was the Orlando Orange County Expressway Authority. What that means, three main items have changed for us. One was our board makeup. Our board makeup prior was five board members, that only one of them was an elected official. We now have six elected officials and three governor appointees. The second major difference is our jurisdictional boundaries. Previously, we were simply Orlando, Orange County area, although our expressways reach out into, well into Seminole County here, out down towards Osceola County on the southern end. Don't have much out into Lake County, but four counties now, Lake County, Orange County, Seminole County, and Osceola County. And the last major change is the legislature afforded us the opportunity to explore multimodal, be it buses, bus rapid transit, trains. We know very little about this. The Expressway Authority's never had the, you know, availability to get into that, but we are learning, and part of this process is to educate ourselves and educate our board. The main reason, again, for this is we are reaching out to, doing a main community outreach to local governments, to other agencies, to the community business leaders in the town, and looking for input through the survey that you'll be getting, so that we can present this stuff back to our board. It was going to be July because of vacations and whatnot. We're going to be doing it in August and sharing just kind of what folks have presented back to us, so that they can help make decisions for where we go over the next 25 years. Big picture, you know, we've got six expressways, 417, right in your backyard here. A lot of the residents of Oviedo, I'm happy to say, are customers of ours, and we appreciate that. Seminole County is for, you know, a lot of ways it's built out, but, you know, there are some spurs and some things between us and the Turnpike that we continue to think about and look at. We've got 287,000 ePass accounts. What that breaks down to is about, you know, there's a per account, almost short of two transponders per account, so it's somewhere just shy of 600,000 active transponders out there. On an annual basis, we do about 326 million transactions. Right now, the average transaction is about a dollar, so that equates to about $326 million gross revenue per year. This chart represents where does the money go, I guess is what it says. The key item there is the 29% that goes to capital projects. 52% go into debt payment. We've got in excess of $2 billion in bonds that we are currently paying on to bring those in. They're usually about 30-year bonds, but the 29% for system projects is what this plan and our endeavors are all about. Transaction usage by county, obviously, Orange County is well in 40% range, and then we've got Seminole and Brevard Counties as a very close two and three as our customer base, and that's for ePass and some Pass, which is a Turnpike system as well. So this Master Plan update, what, we're taking about a nine-month to 12-month look at our existing system. We are talking to folks, trying to get feedback on potential expansion projects. It really serves as a basis of our capital improvement plan over the next 25 years. We do an update every year of our five-year work plan, much like any entity of our magnitude, and the projects that come out of the 25-year outlook become the basis for each of those individual five-year work plan updates. Four main elements of the Master Plan. I mentioned the existing system improvements. There's a tolling and revenue policy that comes out of that. There's the expansion projects and the potential, you know, alignments to consider, and then we already discussed the multimodal. Why do we do this? You know, population is growing. Right now, Florida just surpassed New York, I think, is the number-three most populous state in the country, so, you know, the region, seven-county region right now, is estimated about 4 million population, and through the life of our plan, it's anticipated that could go as high as 5.5 million. Our timeline, we are about a month and a half, almost two months, into our agency, community, and local government outreach. This slide shows July, just, you know, it was earlier today, we had already provided it, but that meeting, due to schedules, is most likely going to move out to August, where we'll be reporting back to our board. Then we will get, once we get some feedback, and we'll do the projects, the identification and valuation of existing system projects and potential expansion projects, put all that together into a draft plan towards the end of this year, and hopefully in the January timeframe, January, February, we'll have a final plan for them to adopt. So again, getting back to the homework part of it, there is a survey. It's quick, it's put together in a way where, you know, it shouldn't take too much of your time, 10 minutes maybe, and we can come back and collect them. I can work with whomever, if you give a call or email some folks that, you know, set the meeting up. Just appreciating the feedback and available for any questions.
Are there any questions from council?
No, sir.
No?
No.
Well, great. Thank you so much. Oh, thank you. We appreciate it. We'll take care of the surveys for you, and we'll get them back to you.
Thank you very much.
In a few minutes? All righty, let's move on to item number four, then. Employee Health and Wellness Center review. I'm sure we must have some folks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. For the record, Sean Fleming with the Garing Group. Address is 11505 Fairchild Gardens Avenue in Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. So it's that time of year again. Looking around at everybody, I know you guys have heard this a couple times over the past couple of years, so we have an update looking at some of the employee health center clinic utilization statistics, and then also taking a look at the effect that that has had on the medical insurance plan. And throughout the presentation, we're primarily going to look at two main areas. We're going to look at both usage in each category, so the number of items running through either the clinic or the plan, and then we're also going to look at cost. Those are sometimes directly correlated, and then sometimes we see a little bit of an inverse as we go through that. There we go. Okay, so first off, what we have on our first slide here is we just want to take a look at the appointment utilization going through the health center, and you'll see there are a red trend line that takes a look at the last two years, and you'll see that we've seen a pretty significant increase in the utilization and the number of appointments going through the employee health center. So we're averaging right now about 392 appointments per month. When the health center first opened, we were down more in the high 100s to low 200 range. So things are definitely looking good there. The next thing we look at is capacity, and what we mean by capacity is how many appointments are available on a daily basis, and then how many people are taking up those appointments. And we use 85% as a benchmark of can people get in on an annual basis? That's what care here, the clinic administrator likes to see. We've been running a little bit over that, but everything has still been running smoothly in the clinic. The reason is, this is based on 15-minute appointments. There could be some people that come in with a five-minute appointment, so because of that, the clinic administrator is able to get some more people in. But from a capacity point of view, we're a little bit higher than we'd like to be, but that's a good thing. If that continues, we may have to look at do some hours needed to be added for the
Okay, here we go. Why don't we get one of these engineering kids up here?
Yeah, exactly. So, next slide, prescription utilization. You'll see a number of prescriptions running through the clinic on a monthly basis, and that red line is our trend line. Things have been going down a little bit, but that's not necessarily a bad thing. Ultimately, we'd like to see people taking their medication, but more importantly, we'd like to see situations where maybe I get my condition under control and I actually don't need to take medication at all. So the next set of slides we're going to go through, basically, we're going to look at 2009, which is the year before the health center opened, and we're going to look at the statistics all the way through 2014 as we go through. So the first one we're looking at is professional office visits running through the Blue Cross Medical Plan. You'll see before the clinic opened, in 2009, we had about 1,600 visits running through the plan. That went down at the lowest, which was last year, was just over 1,000. It creeped up a little bit, about 70 appointments this year, but in the grand scheme of things, if we look back to, you know, 1,600 down to 1,000, to then go up a little bit is not anything that we're overly concerned about. But I will talk about that a little bit more as we talk about some of the costs. So professional office visit costs, you'll see that office visit costs are still significantly lower than they were before the clinic opened up. They have gone up some this year. That's due to a couple reasons, which I'm going to talk about after we talk about pharmacy, because they're actually related to each other as we go through. So total number of prescriptions, again, the number of prescriptions significantly lower from 4,500 running through the plan in 2009, to last year, about 2,400 running through the plan. That's up a little bit, and you'll see as we look at the next slide, the cost on prescriptions itself, although it's still below where we started, is up a little bit. So as you look at some of those trends, there's a couple things going on in the industry. We have a lot of new medications that have come out. They are higher-cost medications. You may have, if you've turned on the TV, you've probably seen commercials for hepatitis C medications. Those drugs cost about $1,000 a pill. You take it for three months, so about $90,000 to $100,000 for a course of treatment. There's a bunch of new diabetes medications that are out, as well as a couple of other conditions. Why that's relevant, not only on the prescription side, but also the utilization of office visits, is because those conditions are more specialized, people need to go to specialists and go back into the medical plan to get treatment and to be prescribed those medications. So that has a little bit of effect on both parts of the plan. But overall, things are still well below 2009 where we started. Now, emergency room is not directly correlated to the clinic, and you'll see that emergency room kind of ebbs and flows on a yearly basis. A lot of that has to do, more than anything, with what time of day does somebody start feeling the way they feel that they feel they need to go get treatment? If it happens at 2:00 in the morning, they're going to the emergency room. If it happens to happen at noon while they're here, they'll probably run over to the clinic. Of course, if you're having something like chest pains, something along those lines, you're always going to the emergency. So there's a certain level of that we can't control. Inpatient and outpatient facility utilization, you'll see there, before the clinic went in, you had about 185 days that members spent in the hospital. Last year, that was 72, so more than cut in half. And as we look at that, and we look at the cost of an admission, we've reduced that by about 25 admissions per year, which represents a savings of about $750,000. So catastrophic claims, you've heard in the last couple of years, whether we've talked about the renewal or the same report, you've heard us use the term catastrophic claims. Those are claims that exceed $50,000. And if you take a look at this slide, you'll see both the cost of all the, so that's the cumulative cost of those claims, over $50,000, and it's also the number. And what's really interesting is if you look at 2012 and 2013, you had six in 2012, and you had five in 2013. In 2014, you only had four. But look at the cost and the total spend on those. And that, again, ties to a lot of these things. There's new specialty medications and treatments for cancer and a couple other of these main catastrophic conditions. So we're fighting a little bit of an uphill battle. As much as we can pull stuff out of the medical plan, what's left is still costing more and more as we go on on a yearly basis, and that's a challenge we face. So return on investment, we gave you a written report as well to go along with this, and we actually did return on investment two different ways. One is to look at medical trend or inflation, and say if we had started in 2009 and we just went up at the norm like everybody else without a health center, what would we be spending compared to what we're spending now? And then the other way is to look at, you know, what would we have spent for each one of those visits that we shifted into the health center? And both ways, when we do the return on investment, we get basically the same number, which is about a two-to-one return on investment. So for every dollar that you're spending for the employee health center, you're actually saving $2 on that. And that's anything over one and a half is a number that we're pretty happy with. We feel it's a good return on investment. So real quick, because I don't want to take a lot of your time, a couple of just quick observations. You know, medical plan utilization does continue to decrease significantly below those 2009 levels. That includes visits and visit costs, prescriptions, prescription costs, hospital admissions. But what we do want to point out is that we do expect, as we move forward, we'll continue to see things go down, but we'll start to see a little bit of a flattening effect, because you've had such great success in having people move, getting care out of the health plan to the clinic for the things that they can, but there's still always going to be certain things, like, you know, you can't have your MRIs in the clinic, you know, you can't receive cancer care in the clinic. There's certain things that still have to run through the medical plan, so we expect that we'll start to see a little bit of a leveling over the next couple of years, and we'll keep looking at new ways to try and drive further costs out of the medical plan to a lower rate. But we also have to realize that there are certain things that just are never going to be able to be done in the health center because of the level of specialized care that's involved with that. So we need to keep that in mind as we move forward for the next couple of years. And with that, that was all I had for this evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Council, have any questions?
No.
No, sir, no. Well, great job, as usual. I know that the clinic is always busy lately, so that is good to see, and it's great that our employees can get all their basic needs and care taken care of right here at City Hall, so it seems to be working well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, with that being said, now we'll go back to item number one, which will be the recognition of the 60th Annual State Science and Engineering Fair students. So council, why don't you join me down front? Please? Oops, sorry, Stephen. Hiding behind me there. All righty, as I was saying, now we're going to go on to the recognition of the 60th Annual State Science and Engineering Fair of Florida winners, and we're going to start with Jackson Heights Middle School. I mean, because everything isn't always about athletics out here in Oviedo. We have some pretty darn smart kids in our city who deserve this recognition. So let me bring up the principal of Jackson Heights, Ms. Sarah Mansour. Give her a big round of applause. And Sarah, why don't I turn it over to you, and you can tell us all about this?
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Well, I am at the honor to be here. As Mayor said, I am Sarah Mansour Blythe, principal at Jackson Heights Middle School, the best middle school in Seminole County, just saying, just saying. Anyhow, and we have a lot to celebrate, we had three students who placed at the State Science Fair this year, and I'm going to bring up our department chair, Mrs. Erin Watson, and she's going to tell us more of the specifics of their awards.
All right, thank you so much for having us today. I want to start off by saying how lucky I am as a teacher. I'm not only the science department chair, but I actually get to teach all three students that place, and I'm not lucky just because they won awards for our school or for Oviedo, but because they are truly students who are going to make a difference in the world. So I'm very excited to introduce them to you guys. Should I go ahead and start the introductions? All right, so I want to first introduce Connor Cleveland. He is my eighth-grade science student, and he is, he won fourth place for his project in the behavioral and social science category.
Are you here?
Next, I'd like to introduce Reagan Pomp. She won third place in her medicine and health category. And finally, I would like to introduce Nidiori, who won first place in the state in her environmental
Guys, these are some pretty smart kids, aren't they? Let's give them a big round of applause. Kids, why don't you come on up front here? Get up front with your principal, teacher. We'll kind of fill in the background. Reagan's taller than me, but everybody is, so. I'll get on the end here. We'll let Councilman Schen get in the back. Councilwoman, can they see you? Keith, where are you going? Come on back, Keith. Now, parents, we only have one rule with those pictures, and you put them on Facebook, you need to tag us. All righty, now let's move on to Oviedo High School. Same thing, recognition for the 60th Annual State Science and Engineering Fair of Florida. We have the winners from Oviedo High School, and to present them, we have their vice principal, Robert Frasca. Robert, come on up.
Good evening. I'm proud to bring with me two students tonight in a very unique situation. They're both brothers and sister, so I'm going to bring them up together, Nikhil and Sapna Patel. Nikhil won second place in his category in the state and fourth nationally. We just got back from the national event last week. Sapna won first place in her event in the state. She was also overall best project at the state fair. She won the, for all the categories, she won the number-one project, and finished third These two are smarter than I'll ever pretend to be.
And once again, guys, I mean, from the same family, first place, second place, give them another big round of applause. Now, I saw you walk up to your parents, so come on, get up front here. We're going to let them take a whole bunch of pictures.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Councilman Schen?
No, sir.
Deputy Mayor?
No, sir.
To the left?
Good.
Good. All those in favor of the motion, the motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1621. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Go mow your own lawn now, guys. Alrighty, moving right along, we're up to item number 16, which is the vacate process. This is ordinance number 1622. Mr. Group, can you do us the pleasure, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, providing for the vacation...
You don't have to wait for us, guys. If you wanted to, yeah.
Providing for the vacation or abandonment of city interest in real property, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for processes and procedures, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb, please enlighten us and the audience.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to change the method by which it approves the vacation of rights of way. As you know, you just adopted an ordinance. And one of the things about this is that, that right of way, when it was created, it was created through the plating process. It wasn't created through the adoption of an ordinance, it was through the approval of a platte, and then it was recorded in Seminole County. The staff has been working with the city attorney to find a way that we could streamline the process, to make it easier, not only for people to come and make the request, but also for the staff to take it through the process. We've always felt that having to adopt an ordinance to vacate something that was approved through a platte was a bit onerous, quite honestly. So we approached the city attorney and he drafted an ordinance that would allow city council to approve vacations of right of way through the resolution process, which will make it much more of a streamlined process. You won't have to go through the public hearings, you won't have to do the advertising. It'll save money that way. We'll be able to place it on the agenda. The staff will still go through the same review process. We will still contact the utility franchise holders and we'll still contact the county or the state, whichever one is applicable. So with that, counsel, it is requested that you conduct a public hearing and adopt resolution number 1622.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, this is a public hearing. I'd like to open that up. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address counsel on ordinance number 1622, vacation process? Hearing and seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Make the motion to adopt ordinance 1622.
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Schen, anything?
Uh, thank you, staff. Making the process a little more streamlined.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I agree.
Councilman Brad?
Good.
Councilman Henken?
I'm good, sir.
Councilman Brad?
I'm good.
You're good? Just want to point out that on here is the design for the adaptive traffic light control systems. So that's the engineering portion for the state roads, correct? Mr. Wyatt? That's the first step towards getting those lights all synced up? Love to hear it. Alrighty. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the motion on the table is to adopt all of the items seven through 14. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to ordinance number 1621, this is the lawn street right of way and vacation. Mr. Group, would you do us the pleasure of reading ordinance 1621 by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning a 50-foot right-of-way located on a closed portion of Lawn Street between Lot 6 and Lot 11, South Park, 547 Oak Street and 567 Oak Street. Containing approximately 0.156 acres, as depicted more specifically on the attached Exhibit A, provide for findings, a savings provision, conflict, severability, non-codification, and an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council has asked to approve a vacation of a 50-foot right-of-way on an undeveloped section of Lawn Street. It has been reviewed by the appropriate city staff. Franchise utility operators were also contacted, as well as Seminole County, all of which stated no objection to the proposed vacation. City engineer reviewed all the data and determined that closing or vacating the right-of-way will not operate as a detriment to the city or the public, as long as the city maintains a utility easement across the right-of-way. It is recommended that city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1621.
Terrific. Mr. Cobb, thank you. Are the applicants here? Do you have anything, anything to add to this, or do you agree with staff findings? Alrighty, so we'll move on to the public hearing portion. As Mr. Cobb did mention, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address counsel on ordinance number 1621? Hearing none, we're going to close the public comments and move on to the pleasure of counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Henken?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1621.
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Henken, anything?
Nope, just thanks for taking care of that all these years. I already know how long you guys have been taking care of it, so we appreciate that. And now it's yours for good.
In perpetuity until we decide to come in and put a big pipe across it or something, who knows? Councilman Schen?
I'm good, sir.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm good.
Councilman Brad?
Good.
Alrighty, all those in favor of the motion, the motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1621. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Go mow your own lawn now, guys. Alrighty, moving right along, we're up to item number 16, which is the vacate process. This is ordinance number 1622. Mr. Group, can you do us the pleasure, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, providing for the vacation...
You don't have to wait for us, guys. If you wanted to, yeah.
Providing for the vacation or abandonment of city interest in real property, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for processes and procedures, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb, please enlighten us and the audience.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to change the method by which it approves the vacation of rights of way. As you know, you just adopted an ordinance. And one of the things about this is that, that right of way, when it was created, it was created through the plating process. It wasn't created through the adoption of an ordinance, it was through the approval of a platte, and then it was recorded in Seminole County. The staff has been working with the city attorney to find a way that we could streamline the process, to make it easier, not only for people to come and make the request, but also for the staff to take it through the process. We've always felt that having to adopt an ordinance to vacate something that was approved through a platte was a bit onerous, quite honestly. So we approached the city attorney and he drafted an ordinance that would allow city council to approve vacations of right-of-way through the resolution process, which will make it much more of a streamlined process. You won't have to go through the public hearings, you won't have to do the advertising. It'll save money that way. We'll be able to place it on the agenda. The staff will still go through the same review process. We will still contact the utility franchise holders and we'll still contact the county or the state, whichever one is applicable. So with that, counsel, it is requested that you conduct a public hearing and adopt resolution number 1622.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, this is a public hearing. I'd like to open that up. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address counsel on ordinance number 1622, vacation process? Hearing and seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of counsel.
Mr. Mayor? Make the motion to adopt ordinance 1622.
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Schen, anything?
Uh, thank you, staff. Making the process a little more streamlined.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I agree.
Councilman Brad?
Good.
Councilman Henken?
Good job, thank you.
Alrighty, hearing no other thoughts or questions, anything else, anyone? Nope? Alrighty, I'll call the vote. The motion on the table is to adopt ordinance 1622 as presented. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to first reading of ordinances, we have none. Moving on to our first resolution, it's item number 18. It's resolution number 2978-15. This is a site development order, number 435-14. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor.
Help us through this one.
This is a request for the council to amend the approved preliminary subdivision plan for Foster's Grove, which was approved on December 4th, 2014, and site development order number 435-14. The Foster's Grove preliminary subdivision plan plans for a 94-lot, single-family residential development. It is located on the east and west sides of Lee Avenue, approximately 437 feet north of Geneva Drive or County Road 426. The total land area is approximately 44.43 acres. The basic amendment of this proposal is that to redesignate the right-of-ways as public. Under the original approval, the right-of-ways were designated as private right-of-ways. The applicant is proposing an amendment to the preliminary subdivision plan to designate the right-of-ways as public. The lot layout is all the same, and basically the only difference is that gates have gone away. City council did consider this resolution, and it's April 20th, 2000 meeting, and continued it to the May 18th, to this meeting. It's recommended that city council adopt resolution number 2978-15.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant present?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Brian Darumpel, MI Homes, 400 International Parkway, Suite 470, Lake Mary, Florida, 32746. On a personal note, I'm super happy to be up here tonight. I know some of you have kept up with some of my trials and tribulations. On a professional note, it's extremely humbling and exciting to be at these meetings in the beginning because the accolades for the city just keep going on and on. When you print an email from Mayor Per San Pierre, I believe it's gone to three pages now where the accolades, they don't print across this way, they just go down in a, in a strip. And that's the reason why MI's here. That's the reason why MI's worked extremely hard to find more opportunities in the city of Oviedo. And it's certainly the reason why MI Homes would be doing the unthinkable, which is coming back before council board, asking to remove gates as opposed to trying our best to have gates. The team that I have here tonight, if I can just mention everybody, Allison Turnbull from Holland Tonight, Justin Campbell is our entitlement and project manager, which y'all met at the last meeting, and Chad Moorhead is our engineer. I mention them because in my absence, they've done a phenomenal job of keeping this project together, keeping it moving forward, as well as the people back at MI's office. We started with inherited five parcel acquisition from the previous applicant. We moved that to an eight parcel acquisition, adding about 20 more lots to the subdivision. In the end, we transacted 18 parcels to clarify eight plats that were incorrect or legal descriptions that were incorrect. It turned into a huge ordeal, but we got through it and we continued on even after our agreements with the underlying landowners ran into challenges that would effectively not give us the right to have gates. And just to clarify that, when we purchased the land, there are agreements and post-closing obligations that go with, with that transaction. Part of the post-closing agreement contemplated the right-of-ways would be public or they could be private because lawyers know you don't always, aren't always going to agree to agree in the end. We put forth our best efforts, as did the landowners. I'm not here to disparage them in any way, shape, or form. The lawyers couldn't agree on language in one paragraph that would allow us to continue on and have the gates. We're here tonight to present to you some renderings that we believe will show you a beautiful entrance to a subdivision. We believe that we will, it will show you the character and the excitement that we have for this project. I'd like to remind everyone, if they, if they don't know, last time I was before you was for the Orleans Landing project, and we're currently selling homes there on that project for as high as $158 a square foot. No one in the city is getting that kind of money on a per-square-foot basis, except for MI Homes. We believe it's because of the quality of the projects that we build, the thought that goes into the land plan, and as well as our sales and marketing campaign. From the first time I go knock on someone's door and ask them if they're interested in selling to the, to the sales representative that meets the family that ends up buying a home here. It's exciting to see, I'll go back to my original comment, exciting to see that you don't have to be a 6'6", 250-pound sophomore to get accolades in Oviedo. You can be, you can be smart. There's a lot of accolades coming to this city. And we want to present to you tonight the renderings of the subdivision with everything that we projected to have there, as, as Brian Cobb said, just taking the gates out. And if I could have the opportunity to present them to you now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I understand that the last meeting, was it the last meeting that you gave renderings, house renderings? You know, we, we have a tough time handing out renderings because they can be your best friend or your worst enemy in your future. But, you know, at the, at the request of staff, we did it at the last meeting. And again, we, renderings, you know, I don't, I don't think do even come close to justice for an MI home, which is the reason why we're having the success we're having in Orleans Landing. These photos that you see, these renderings that you see here, obviously are the entrance off of Geneva Drive. And the landscaping, the intense landscaping that you see is, was contemplated when this was private right-of-way, maintained by the MI Homes and the HOA Homeowner Association. What we present to you tonight in these same drawings is the same subdivision minus the gates, if we can use a right-of-way utilization agreement or come to some agreement with the city and the staff to maintain these right-of-ways as you see them rendered here in perpetuity, first by MI, when we build the subdivision, and then by the HOA, which will continue to be the management company over the future subdivision when we reach a certain point of being sold out. I want to bring one point to you. In one of our previous agreements that I mentioned with the land owner, landowners, it contemplates a brick wall on their property, which would come from the west and connect to the gates. These renderings don't show brick, they show stone on the entrance. We will continue to work with that landowner, we believe it. Just got described as brick for no particular reason, but, you know, I, I only bring that point up because I, we don't want to be in front of you tonight representing things again, trying to get the approval of your, of your council tonight, and then need to come back later and say, we said brick, we meant stone, we said stone, we meant brick. We want it to be the best-looking, best-selling, you know, highest gross dollar amount homes that are being sold in the city of Oviedo, with the exception, I believe, that some that are on a lake. And we do that consistently in our submarkets all over central Florida. And we look forward to doing it again in your, in your city, if we can get your support and approval tonight. I'd like to answer any questions you have, or any questions of any members of our staff that are here tonight.
Anybody have any questions? So you're going to do it either brick or stone, is what you're saying?
You know, it's our, I'm sorry.
That decision hasn't been fully...
The decision's been made to make this stone. There's one section of a wall that would be on private property with an easement test for the wall. And we will work with that homeowner or that property owner to have the stone and the materials be at continuity. And I, and I, again, I bring that point up because, you know, we acknowledge that we came here every, every time and said, we're going to have a gated community, we're going to have gated community. I'm pretty sure almost every council member and the mayor asked us or member of our staff that question. And it's a huge regret that we didn't get there, but we're here tonight to say we could not perform that task. We want to go to beautiful subdivision and sell homes for your residents. We'd like your support in doing that.
Any other questions for Mr. Aaron?
No.
No? We're good for now. If we have something, we'll call you back up. I have no request to speak for us on this item, so I'll move on to the pleasure of counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2978-15.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor?
I'm good with that, but I would like to offer that I, in 1996, my husband and I built a new home, and MI Homes built it, and the whole neighborhood, it was, and it was beautiful. The quality was fabulous. And it wasn't gated, it just had the entrance, but it was really very nice, very beautiful.
Councilman Schen, anything?
No, I see the home's going up in Orleans and...
No, I see the homes going up in Orleans, and hopefully you're selling them quickly and things are going good there, and the same happens here.
Councilman Britton, anything?
I'll just echo what the deputy mayor said. I live in an MI home that was built 25 years ago. In fact, I'm up here checking you guys out. The supervisor of construction was a guy named Bill Wheaton. I just Googled him, he's vice president of MI Homes now, so Billy's going to come a long ways since making my wife happy with appliance colors, so.
Just one time, your structural workstation is still with that proposal.
I'll remember that, thank you.
Hey, that was like in Wait There's More, so.
So give Mr. Wheaton my regards, and I'm good.
Councilman Henken?
Yeah, I think everybody had an MI home. I actually bought my first home in Florida when I was still living in New York off a piece of paper, which I probably wouldn't do again looking back, but it was an MI home, and it was okay. And I did also have the great pleasure of hanging out with Bill Wheaton for a couple of months while he was fixing things. He is a great guy, so pass along my regards to him as well. Orleans Landing, you talk about the quality. I like to just go in and look at stuff being built, and you guys really are doing a good job.
That's called trespassing, but we won't say anything.
I go in there and take a look. You guys are doing a good job out there. It looks like you got a lot sold already, and the prices are up there. So that's good for the community, so it looks good out there, but everything looks fine. Just on a light and note, Brian, it's glad, good to see you back up there again. You know what you went through, and you clawed your way, and we're glad to see you looking healthy, so that's good. So welcome back to the good life, so I'm good, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Cop, did you have something to add to the discussion, or Mr. Group?
Mr. Group does. Well, I just want to make sure we're clear that if this motion is approved, this includes the ability for Brian to finalize the right-of-way utilization permit that allows the landscaping to occur in city right-of-way, et cetera. Turnbull and I, we developed the framework for this, so it's virtually done, but there's still a few things that Brian would need to approve without coming back to y'all. Is that okay?
Thank you, Mr. Group, for pointing that out. And Mr. Group, the issue with the material on the wall, is that anything that we need to address, or?
I don't think so.
And it's not...
Masonary.
Yeah, it's, okay.
If it's stone, then our minimum requirement is brick. And we've always, the council has always held that if it's stone, then that meets the minimum requirement.
Okay, so we're good. You guys are good with everything that you worked out, Mr. Group? Nothing that we need to know about? Okay. All righty. The motion on the table is to adopt Resolution 2978-15. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You're welcome. I would have preferred a gated community, but I understand your challenges. Have a nice evening, everyone. Moving on, we're up to our discussion item. It's item number 19, request for the City Council to consider serving as the evaluation committee for an RFP 15-04, Community Visioning Process Services. Mr. Cop, I believe this was your item that you asked to have put on the agenda, so why don't you just take it from here?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is a request for City Council to serve as the evaluation committee for RFP number 15-04, which is for a community visioning process. When we had our initial budget meeting a few months ago, one of the items that council mentioned an interest in was conducting a community visioning process. The staff issued an RFP, and the RFP came back, the city received a total of nine proposals. The, one of the things that, as the last meeting, I asked you if we could have this discussion item, I strongly feel that this process is one that the City Council needs to be involved on the front end. In a normal RFP, the staff will go, they'll act as, members of the staff will act as the committee, and then bring a recommendation to you. My feeling is, is that on this process, this is something that is a little bit more above than what we would do normally. And tonight, I'm asking you if you would have an interest in serving as the evaluation committee. And one of the things that Mr. Britton asked for when we, I mentioned it at the last meeting, he said, tell us what we would be doing. Basically, the evaluation committee is, in the beginning, the purchasing agent will provide you with copies of every one of the proposals, and you will evaluate them. You'll be given a copy of the criteria and a scoring sheet. And as you go through each proposal, you'll score it. Now, I always recommend two things, have a pencil and a calculator, so that you can change it if you need to, and also don't do like I did one time and be off by about 10 points and skew the scoring for everybody else. But you would go through that, and then we would have a meeting, and it would be a public meeting, in which you would have the opportunity to discuss the proposals. And this is where I said, bring a pencil, because sometimes after having the discussions, it sometimes can cause you to change your score. Once the scores are tallied, then we look at the score pattern and determine, okay, how many do we want to interview, bring in for oral presentations? And most of the time, the scores will shake out such that there will be a group that are really close, and then the next one down is pretty far away. And so you can see where that group is, that's the group really that you have the most interest in. We then will schedule a meeting to have the oral presentations made. Now, this can be scheduled over one day, or it may be scheduled over multiple days. But once again, you would go through the oral presentation, ask questions of the candidates, and then you'll be giving another ranking sheet, in which you would rank those firms as well. You would give them a score based on the criteria on their proposal. We would then add up all the scores once again, and then the top, obviously, the top point getter would be the preferred candidate. And that's the process in a nutshell. Does it require a lot of reading? Yes, it does. It requires a lot of questions? Yes, it does. One of the things about this is, is that when you're serving on the committee, it's much like serving on the City Council. The only time you can really talk to each other is when you're in your meeting. So you can't share your observations with each other until you get into your meeting to talk to each other. Once we have narrowed down to the top candidate, maybe the top two or three, then we'll go off. The staff will go in, we'll do reference checks. Once the reference checks come in, we'll bring it forward to you as a formal recommendation regarding the selection of the firm. In your memorandum, I gave you five reasons as to why I feel that this is really important, this is so important that the City Council should be the evaluation committee. In the main, let's just like to review them with you. The process creates a vision for the entire city. This isn't a strategic plan. This isn't a comp plan. This is a community vision. This is where we want to go. This is what we want to become. And the vision also is the ultimate policy direction. You are the policy-setting board for the city government, and this is the ultimate policy direction. You notice in your staff reports, we give you how everything we do is linked to your strategic plan. Well, everything we do would become a way to achieve our vision. Our strategic plan would be a way to achieve the vision. And so it's the ultimate policy direction for a community as a whole. My opinion, the consultant's going to be working directly for the City Council, and that's something that's very important. Also, we want to get a good comfort level with the City Council and the consultant on the front end. One of the things that the mayor mentioned to me when I first mentioned it to him, he said, this is going to be sort of like when we brought Wade Trim in. And I said, yes, sir, it's going to be like that. It's on that same level. Also, you're starting your budget process, and this is going to give you the opportunity to see how you want to, if you want to fit this into your budget process, or how you want to fit this into your process. One of the things about it is you don't have to start October 1st. You can push it off later on in the year if you feel that's going to be the most financially feasible way to do this. So for those five reasons, I feel I would recommend that the City Council serve as the evaluation committee. But I wanted to bring it to you to get your direction on how you felt about doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Cop. Anybody want to start?
The mayor?
Yep.
All right, let me start this off. I'll just throw my negativity out on this, because you all know where I am on this. But, you know, let me just start by saying, Brian, I don't have a problem with the City Council looking at, you know, who would do this task. My problem is interviewing all these companies and then telling them that we can't do this for a year or two. And, you know, just to be frank and to the point, I mean, there's just too many greater needs here. I mean, the proposal cost range, you know, $85,000 to $305,000, you know? I mean, I think we all know what the needs are, you know? Police officers, taking care of the regular employees. It's not that it's not an important project, it's a very important project, but honestly, it just doesn't sit with me well right now that we would even consider spending this money and interviewing people and getting their hopes up that it's going to happen soon, because honestly, I don't want to do this for five years. You know, Councilman Britton mentioned at the last meeting, we have all these strategic plans we did. This group has sat in goal-setting, at least I have, twice. I mean, I think we have a good vision. You know, my vision is making that park better, finishing it off, making sure that hospital gets good, finishing the master plans that we have for the parks. I realize this is a different thing, but, you know, I just can't in good conscience interview seven people and in my heart knowing I don't even want to do this now, you know? I think our city has a good vision already that's been laid out by our staff and by us, and, you know, and this may not be a popular decision. I'm really anxious to hear what the rest of you have to say, you know? And if the decision is to march on, then I will be a willing participant, but I really think it's a bad idea at this time, you know, to get, you know, companies' hopes up. And with that cost range, with the needs we need, I mean, my number one goal right now for this city and talking to people is to have more cops on the street for a growing city. I mean, I couldn't in good conscience spend the money on this and not do that as well, and it's only limited dollars. So it's not that it's a good thing, and when the time comes, I'll certainly read all the proposals, and I'd be willing to, I think you're right on with that, Brian, but I just think we're a couple of years early on this one. So just my take.
Who wants to go next? Looking at me? I just want to know who wants to go next. I'll go if you want me to. Go ahead. I mean, because I'll be exactly the opposite. Well, you know, I respect Councilman Henken's opinion, and there are lots of needs. I think what's being lost here is that this is community visioning. This is when we, just like the Downtown Study Committee, this is when we get a group of citizens, small, large, it doesn't matter, it could be 500 people, who become involved in this and help craft the vision that not only this council, future councils, and staff will follow, but they'll follow for the next 30 years. And that may actually include more police officers. That may include who knows what we'll come up with. I sent to Mr. Cop, and I know he included it in the package, Orlando just went through this, and had a year's worth of charrettes. I mean, we're not going to have a year's worth of meetings, and again, it'll be just like the Downtown Study Committee. If we want to participate in it, if we want to go to the meetings, if we want to hear what the residents are saying, we do it. If not, we wait till the end when they wrap it all up. And what Wade Trim had done is they broke us all down into five separate groups that we sat with. And each individual table came up with ideas and silled the cream, as Brian said, even with these, with the consultants. And Mr. Cop, you are correct, when we went through this years back with Wade Trim, it was very evident who rose right to the top. It became a pretty easy decision. But anyway, we sat together, the Downtown Study Committee went through a year, year and a half worth of visioning, let's call it, for Oviedo on the park, and the ideas that were the cream of the crop rose right to the top, became the Downtown Study Committee Plan or Book or, what was that called? Downtown Study Committee?
Master Plan.
Master Plan, thank you. You know, and 15 years later, it's there, because the vision was bigger than the council. Wouldn't matter who was sitting up here, that thing was getting built. Roads are being widened in the historic downtown. That was another thing that came out of the Wade Trim visioning, because the residents were saying, okay, we're going to build this new downtown, and we have our historic downtown, how do we fix it? So when you look at the Downtown Master Plan, it goes from the new downtown, which is where the focus started, but because we had these 60, 80, 100 people in the room, it grew. And then the CRA came, and then other things came along the way. Project for Public Spaces was another one that we did. You know, so I agree, we have a lot of needs, but I would also say that this is a huge need, because we haven't done this now in, you know, it's going to be at least a dozen years, that, at least. Because the goal-setting and stuff that we've done is all five-year stuff. That's just, you know, where are we going to go?
Mayor, during 19, we've never done a community-wide vision.
Not, right, not a complete...
Not grassroots, no.
Right. We sort of kind of did it with the downtown.
Yeah.
Right, right. We never got to this. I mean, there could be a big roadmap up on the wall. There could be a, who knows what'll come out of it? Brian will write us another postcard. But, you know, I would say we at least sit down, we start to figure out who we like, we see what rises to the top, we see what the costs are, and then we make that decision. I mean, you know, that'd be my two cents. Who's next?
Why don't you like that now they have to make the decision? We're done. Have fun.
Okay, I'll go next.
Deputy Mayor's up. Allison Britton's still over there, he's churning away.
I think it's a very necessary process to go through. I think that it's time, I think we need it. And I will be very, very honest with you, my main concern is the time that would be put on us to do this. I know you all have full-time jobs, you know, and will we be able to do this properly? That is my only concern.
That's right. Get the consultants, let them... When we had Wade Trim, just to help you with that, they had one meeting a month, if I remember, right, Brian?
Yes, sir.
And that meeting, some of the members, we were at each meeting. I mean, I'll fully admit, I went to everyone, maybe missed one or two just by scheduling, but I was at them all. And it was interesting dynamic, because we weren't there to participate. We were only there to observe and watch how the process was developing and seeing exactly what it is the citizens wanted. And then from that point, as I said earlier, then it evolved into, okay, council, now it's time for us to get you down here for a few meeting sets. Then they went and did the draft plan, kind of what we saw earlier from the Expressway Authority, and then they came back with the draft plan. Now, that did take a few meetings. We did have a few workshops on that in order to tweak that plan out and ensure that it was what we wanted. But again, the consultants were doing most of the work, you know, at that point, because they were invested.
I think that it is important to do now, because when it was done back, when was that, that you did it?
2002.
Two. Our city has grown quite a bit, and we, there are new families here, the demographics are different, so I think that it is important to hear what they want. We have new people here that want to have their voices heard, too.
Mayor, could I ask the deputy mayor a question? When you were concerned about the time, was it the time to go, to serve as the evaluation committee?
That's what I'm thinking.
Or the time to serve, or the visioning process itself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant visiting.
Yeah, no, I think it's the evaluation process.
Generally, we usually give, depending, and it really depends on the number of responses, like if we have just two or three responses, we'll just give like a week to do the reviews. If they're, like this one has nine, so we're going to give you a couple of weeks to go and review all the things before we come together in a meeting. We try to work with you to accommodate your schedules regarding the review. I know how difficult it can be, having set, and especially like transportation consultants, when you get 15 proposals, and you've got to go through all of them and rank them and everything. It can be, you know, quite a few nights, but generally, it'll take you probably 15 to 20 minutes, maybe a half an hour to go through a proposal. Some aren't as big as others, some are very small and very right to the point. I love those.
The cream rises, like Brian said, right to the top. And when we did it with Wade Trim, it was, it was obvious. I mean, there was no talk about, even when we hired our first set of Tallahassee consultants, was done this way as well. We had Slater and his crew, and two other groups that had come down. And when Slater sat down at that table, within five minutes of the man speaking, it was obvious he was getting the job. I mean, because he just rose right to the top, so. Matter of fact, I don't even think we went through the whole entire interview process. I think we just stopped it. We said, okay, you're our guys. you're our guys.
Well, that's the thing, we try to move the evaluation process, we try to move that quickly. We don't, we don't want to extend that out very long, so.
All right, Keith, you ready?
I suppose.
Or do you want to go to Councilman Shank?
I don't know, you want to go, Steve?
I want to go last, I'd never go last.
Oh, okay.
I'm always first, I'm going to sit back this time.
Go ahead, you're up.
Well, I just, I'll start off with an interesting observation. I just went to the City of Oviedo website, and I don't see a vision in there anywhere. I couldn't find it if you paid me. And that kind of gets to the crux of it. We do have priorities that we've got to work. If we want to do this, I'd like to see it put in the priorities that we established a month or so ago, that will come back to us in the budget process. Frankly, I think we've got a vision right now, and it's called Oviedo on the Park, that we need to develop programming for, and until we get that done, I think anything else would be a distraction, because that's, that's our jewel right now, that's our vision turning into reality, actually. And what we've got to do is figure out how we're going to use that to the best benefit of the citizens. Now, if we want to do something and bring citizens in and ask them their opinions on what to do with that park, that's fine, but right now, I don't see a clear programming plan for that, and that, that would be my priority for, for the coming year. I think, and I'm just going to speak from the heart, that, you know, I, we did a visioning plan, we did a lot of strategic planning, and in the past, and frankly, I don't plan on being up here forever, and I don't think many of us plan on being up here. I think there's another generation that's waiting in the wings that can come on board in four or five years and take this up with a, with a mature park, and say, now what we've got is a, is a programmed park, a venue, that we've been working on for twenty years, and an old downtown that's being redeveloped, what's our vision for, for maturing for that? So, with that, you know, I kind of agree that it's not a bad idea, but I'd rather see us focus more on, on what we're going to do with the park. I did look at the RFP, I kind of chuckled, because I had to get to page twenty before it even says what a scope of work would be, and then on twenty-one, there says that the city really doesn't have any real project management plan for how this would work, but we'll let you know. So I think we need to do some more upfront work with this, figure out what we want to pay as far as a budget, and, and develop some of the visions, how we vision the visioning process to go, maybe an upfront planning step, and then, and then maybe go and kick it off with, with a budget line in the following year. So, that's where I stand. Oh, and I tell you what, one more thing, I just had it written down here. Time-wise, I've, I've read a lot of proposals, I helped Jerry read the accounting proposals, that's a lot of work, but I'm really not interested in having a consultant do my work. The visioning process is really for us to do. They can facilitate it, but it's going to take a lot of work out of, out of us and the citizens to herd the cats and get those, like you say, the cream rises to the top, but it's not going to be easy. And putting it off on the consultants, if we throw it over to them, they're going to give us back just what we gave them. Just, if we give them crap, they'll give us crap back and pat themselves on the back, so it's, it's going to take a lot of effort whenever we start this.
Can I just throw one, one comment on that, too? And I think if we are doing this, you know, Keith just brought up a really good point. You know, usually, when you give consultants stuff, they'll, you know, they'll take it, then analyze it, but you know, my question would be, we have nine firms here, wouldn't it make more sense to at least keep the ones in Florida and the local ones? I mean, you have people here.
You can make that choice, though.
What?
You could make that choice.
Well, I'm just saying, you have some, some people that don't even, they're not even in Florida, so, you know, I will, if we are going to go this route some, at some point, whether it's this year, next year, whatever, I think that somebody that knows us, knows the personalities, the soul of the city, would be, would be better to do, but I agree with Councilman Britton, he had a lot of good points.
All right, Shank, you're up, brother.
And a lot of, actually, everybody said very good stuff tonight. One of the things that Councilman Britton says is the scope. I looked at the scope, and it was interesting, I'll say it that way. It needs to be laid out a little bit better, I think, if we're going to be on the back end, looking at, I think we need to develop the scope a little better. I think the scope needs to identify, what are we, what are we looking for? I don't know that it does, and I don't know that we do, to sit there and say, well, it, it does reflect all five and what we're looking for, that maybe the start really is, where, what do we want as a scope, and looking at some others that have been done. We're mixing up our, our plans and this visioning kind of intermingling. And there's a reason we're doing that, I think, is that we have a lot of plans out there. We have to relook at all those plans, how they work together, and that leads to the visioning. You know, again, Councilman Britton said that last time, we have a lot of plans. And I said that, we don't have, we do, but I think we need to examine our plans again, and look at our plans, how they all fit together, because those plans are, all come into their ripe age, you know, pretty much, and all have been through rough times the past few years, and I still say we've got some bumps along our way that we've all been inkling at, but things, hopefully, there's a brighter outlook that's reflective in those plans, but I think we have to reevaluate what those plans say and how they really fit and work together, and it'll give us that vision, it'll help us with that vision. You know, the mayor and I are probably only two that sat through all those, because I sat through almost every one of those Wade Trims, and fifteen years ago, and I think it's been four, if not five, goal-setting sessions, the ones at Seminole State, the ones here, multiple ones here, things like that, and have seen the differences, highs and lows, and we, and I think a lot of times when we talk, we refer back to the ones fifteen years ago, fourteen years ago, for a reason. Actually, were effective and worked, and made a plan that, I'll say the first part came to fruition Saturday when we cut the ribbon, and that's, you know, again, phase one.
What was that doctor's name, like, not that I can remember, remember the first guy?
I know who they are, yeah.
Who was the first guy, the guy after Wade Trim?
Ritzy.
Ritzy, Dr. Ritzy.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was the best one.
We had a couple of different, you know, points of goal-setting, and these are goal-setting sessions, and, you know, getting to those five-year plans, and again, Councilman Britton hits it right, we just opened a gem, and now the key is to keep that gem going, to make that gem the focal point, the kickoff point for the historic downtown, as it's outlined in the master plan that, you know, the mayor referred to, that big document that I've actually printed copy, I'll still let you look at and go, okay, it outlined how this should work, including the CRA, including all the outlining areas that are overlapped, including redevelopment plans. We're going to start hitting, well, how do we redevelop? That's a weakness we have right now, where our code is redevelopment really isn't talked about very well, and how to do it effectively, and how we want redevelopment to occur in all those areas. So I think, you know, it may be the first step in this is looking at the current plans. And I hate to create work for us, but it's that kind of thing, is we need to start, start there. Look at the Parks Master Plan, look at the downtown plan, look at all these plans again, and just refresh ourselves what they say, what they really mean, how they, how we follow, how we have it, and I don't mean that in a bad way. Some of them we've probably followed very well in some parts and not very well in others, and because the dynamics have changed. So I think to me, that would be the first step, and then looking at the vision. And like I said, the scope, I think, needs to be redefined, and that, we redefine during that process, we'd find a better scope to lead us to that vision. So I'd say we could do it, that first part internally, is start looking at all the plans we have, and I think, again, some of them are hitting their right points that they need to be, in some places legally looked at, but start the process of reexamining those plans.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, when you said that, I just want to piggyback on what you're saying about the master plans. One thing I've tried to do every year is get the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee to pull out the master plan and say, let's, let's highlight what's in here that we've done in the last year, and then establish what, what we want to do in the next year, what's our priorities, and that's how you can get citizens involved in this stuff. And that, you know, eventually would, would lead to a fairly good visioning session, but we've got all these other master plans. I don't need anyone to have a charrette to tell me we don't have an east-west quarter. We haven't had one for fifteen years. That's, that's exactly what we're working on. We're going to be another four or five years till we get that. Then we might want to look at our transportation master plan, and what we want to see this city do as far as multimodal transportation. But I just wanted to emphasize your point, that, that is a good point.
And I see something.
But what is the point?
And I see we're going to lead to it, and that's exactly what I'm going to lead to. I saw what he just wrote, and is going to say, the mayor says my, you know, this is part of visioning, it is. It leads to the visioning, and that's what I say, it goes back to the scope, we just don't.
Well, I'm sorry.
See it in the scope yet, that I've read, that it leads us there. I look at the scope, and that's what I say, I think we need to redefine the scope amongst us and look at that scope, and maybe that's the first real part, is talking about that scope.
Well, all right, it sounds like we're at a stalemate here, which, which is fine. You know, we'll have more discussions on it, but I will just ask everybody and let everybody know then, if we're going to do this ourselves, I am going to start calling the meetings to do it, because we have got to start somewhere. You know, if we want to go through all of our master plans, and we want to have a lot of work sessions, that's fine, we'll do it ourselves, and then we'll develop our scope. But the whole part of this visioning is you bring in the profession, when we designed a new downtown, we had no clue what we were doing, none. It was a leap of faith with Wade, not a leap of faith, they had the experience in it, they had Charlie Seaman. You bring these guys in, you let that cream rise to the top, then your, your work order actually changes with what you want them to do. I mean, the work order, Wade Trim got written after we chose them, you know, what they were going to do, how they were going to do it, so.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I, to me, it's, whether it's, we look and change the scope to do that with us, have someone.
But we keep saying us, this should be the citizens.
Oh, I don't mind, I don't mind the citizens looking at all those plans.
There should be two hundred of them in here.
As, as the, as, you know, Councilman Britton said, having the Parks, you know, Parks Committee, they're, to me, that's part of their responsibility, is they should be helping guide us on that document, so they'll be a key part of, you know what, let's schedule in.
But, but we have that document, we've got the transportation document, we have this document. Now we need somebody to pull it all together and let the residents know, because most residents don't even know that we have all these documents.
And then that could be, to me, what the first, the scope is of the first part, and take that as, the first part of visioning is that, and then we'll look after that, let's go look at the guy, I don't know if the best guy, the best guy to corral us may not be the best guy to lead us on the vision, and like I said, looking at the scope, it doesn't lay out that way to me, that that's how the scope progresses us, or how it's laid out for them to present it.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make one, one quick comment, just to, you know, because I think.
I think you guys are losing focus.
No, well, well.
We're just, we're just meandering around right now.
Well, no, I'm going to try to bring this into focus, because I, you know.
Well, I don't mean this, I just need direction for the city.
Let me just say, I, I hear where we're all going, everybody brought up good points, but you know, I just want to remind everybody, yesterday, Saturday, you know, you had one of the greatest moments this city's ever had in cutting the ribbon on that park, that was born out of meetings that were fifteen years ago, a vote of the residents twelve years ago. I think, all I'm saying is, we got so many good things to work on, and, and I forgot who, who said it, but that park needs programming, it needs concerts, it needs this, it needs that, I'm just saying, we have all these new toys right now. This is a great idea, and certainly, I hope to be here to, to work on it, I know we all do. I just think it's a little premature. I don't want anybody leaving this meeting tonight to think that, you know, some of us that said, let's put it off, it's not important, it's very important, but right now, you know, I, I mean, I talked to one of the hospital people the other day, they're hoping, you know, within a year, they have a girder in the ground, as Councilman Shank brought up.
They're going to have girders in the ground by the end.
That's what they, yeah, that's what she said. I mean, Councilman Shank, he brought up redevelopment. Do you know what's going to come along that area, when this comes? So I think this is a great idea.
We do have a vision for it.
I think we're, I think we're just.
I know what you're saying. Can we, can we look at, how about redefine the scope that starts the process?
Mr. Cobb's been trying to get him, let's, let's hear it.
I think it's just, it's just a couple of years premature, that's all.
Well, one thing about the scope.
It's not, it's now you got to do it, later's going to be too late.
Let me explain something about the scope. We took the, the scope was developed through other RFPs that other cities have done. The scope is a guideline to the candidates on how to create their proposal. I haven't read the proposals, but I can tell you from reading proposals, working on other visioning projects, the proposals are going to tell you the process for which they want to facilitate for you, okay? They may come in and say, we're going to do completely one-hundred percent grassroots. We're going to establish meetings over the course of ever how many months, we're going to go to every part of the city, we're going to talk about all these different topics, and we're going to categorize them, and, but they may come in and say, you know what, we're going to, we're going to create a focus group, and we're going to deal with that focus group. The scope was to give them the ability, the guidelines for creating their proposal, and then their proposals are what really tells you the scope, the how, the how part that you're looking for. It's in the, I believe it's in the proposals.
And you know what, you're actually asking, we're getting, the question you're really asking is, should we act as this? And I'll tell you this, yes, because we can always say no. So yes, do I want to look at their proposals and see? Yes, and I apologize, we got caught up in stuff, but yes, you know, and I think that gives us consensus to move along on that direction. I would like, I would like to look at them.
That's fine.
There's no doubt about that. I'd definitely like to look at them and see what they're offering and how, because like I said, I think we've all been through good and bads of different, this type of stuff, so I definitely like to see it, and then whether one is fits, doesn't fit, we can tweak it along, as I said, we know it's going to change, we can reject it all and say, that's not the process.
Right.
None of us hit it even close. Like Councilman Britton said, we, we sat on the accounting one, and it is a cream does, two of them, you know, it does usually out of the nine, two possibly three are going to go wee right up there, you're going to hit them and go, they're going to, then it's a matter of listening to others' views of those two or three that really, we're all going to hit on the same three, so to speak. It seemed in that respect, and in general, other ones, too. But I'm sorry, I, I like to look at them, so if we can move on with that, that would be the next step for me.
So now it sounds like there's consensus to move forward as the selection committee to start, set up how.
I thought I heard we have consensus to move forward to review the proposals and decide whether we want to select.
Well, as the committee.
Yeah, we can't, we can't look at them now, because they've accepted them. We have got to become the.
Committee.
The committee, correct, Brian?
Yes, sir.
We can reject.
That's correct.
I mean, that could be our thing in the end, it's not.
We can't just happen to thumb through them and then decide.
We have no budget constraints?
We might, but we don't know yet.
I'm sorry, can you give me a little bit more on your question, maybe I can help you out more?
Are we constrained by budget? If we pick a $500,000 proposal, are we going to, what are we going to do to implement it? Or would you give us a recommendation on what the budget should be?
He did, eighty-six to three oh five, that's in the memo.
Yes, the, that's your range, the range of the nine proposals. We gave you the range.
That's the range, but I'm, what I'm asking for is, and I asked for it in the beginning was.
If, if you selected as a line item on a priority. Well, if you, let's say you went through the process, and you decide, you decided on a firm, and let's say the firm was the $300,000 firm, okay? It would have to go through the budget process, and yes, we would have to find a way to fund that price, that price is what we would have to do. And so we would have to make decisions, but the thing about it is, is that the city council would establish the priority of saying, this is something important to us, and so we want you to find the funding for it.
Is it a multi-step process? Where, this is only, this process only chooses which one of these rises to the top.
Yes, sir.
And we have a whole, it falls into the regular process if we fund it or not. That's all. So we still.
So we got a timeline between now and July to figure out where, where it fits in, in the line items.
Yes, sir.
And we could say it doesn't fit at that point, and say, well, we've chosen 278,000, that's the guy, he's the best of those, but it's not fundable this year, period. But when we do get it, that's who we've chosen, I don't, I'm going to say legally, there's some length of time that we have.
And then if we choose them, we could actually, at that point, change their scope and negotiate it down a little bit, we could phase it.
Phase it, whatever.
Yes, you could set a commencement.
But all it is is choosing, we're just looking at the, choosing the best of those nine or none.
And I remember with Wade Trim, we broke it out over like a couple of years or something.
Yes, it was multiple years.
Right, so we paid them a little, a portion of it each year, rather than the half million bucks.
And DJ PJ on the stage?
Yeah.
Council, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Drago and I have a request.
We do.
We need DJ PJ at the food truck event every month. Can you make that happen?
We're going to have different music, but he's the first one we're recording.
He's the first one, none of that.
We like him.
We don't want different music. He can play different music. He's a DJ.
Thank you, Rob. Well, let's see if Councilman Britton was satisfied with that.
I'm satisfied with that. I just don't want to lose track of what we've got in front of us while we're looking over the horizon. And I agree, we need to look over the horizon. That's our job up here. But right now, we've got some short-term things we want to see developed.
Yeah, we'll bring you all those details at the next two meetings and let you prioritize.
I'd like to make a motion that Councilman Henkin become our program director.
Accepted. I'll get you all the concerts.
Any questions?
Can we put him on a committee? We could.
The only thing I, the only thing I want to ask is if we, if we become this committee now, are we bound, are we just going to be reading proposals? My concern is that we, for lack of a better word, we hype up these nine companies, they think they're coming. Are we just going to, by becoming this committee, are we just going to read the proposals and give you our info? Hey, I really think that this company could bring some positive vision here to the city. By doing this now, are we starting the process by looking at this? Or we're not expending any money right now? So Steve was saying, we could read the proposals and if we like them, we could give you direction to do it, and that could be during the budget process.
No, no, no. The minute we read them, we can't read them until we start the process.
Okay. Wait one second. All you're being asked to do is to read the proposals, rank the proposals, and decide if you want to pick one of the companies, okay? You can, you can pick one or you can pick none. You can pick, we're going to, we're going to rank them one through nine and Mr. City Manager, go negotiate with number one, and if that doesn't work out, go to number two. If that doesn't work out, come back and see us. We'll tell you if we want you to go through.
Or we can invite one or two of them down, like we do with Wade Trim...
Yes.
And have them do...
Well, that's part of the process. That's part of the process. So does serving as the committee start the visioning process? No, sir, it does not. All it's doing is picking the facilitator. That's all you're doing.
And then we're not obligated to hire the facilitator if we don't want to?
If you decide that none of the proposals are to your liking, that is something you can decide.
Well, you and I talked about it. I could agree with that. And I would just say, I would just say to you, if we pick somebody, I need to see who's doing these meetings, how many of them are, and the exact cost. Because that range of costs, for me personally, I'll just get it out there right now, I could not expend that money when we have other needs here that are more pressing to me. I realize vision is great. I like vision too. I want to know what I'm doing a year from now. But when you have glaring needs staring you in the face, and I think we saw a deficit at the last budget and things that are needed, you can't have the toys before you pay the mortgage. That's how I feel. But I don't want to rain on anybody's parade up here who likes this idea because there's nothing wrong with it. It's fine, and I'm sure it will, it will probably give us all some things we never thought about. You know, Bob Delary and I were talking about getting Sun Rail to stop in Oviedo. I wanted it to stop in Oviedo on the Park. He said, "No, we got to go to the mall." So we were visioning already. You know, we'll probably be dead by the time the tracks get laid, but, you know, we had a little visioning there. So I think it's, it's fine, but we certainly can't not take care of the pressing needs. You know, we got some stuff coming up here that these gentlemen come and worry about all the time. That could be an issue. We got cops.
That could be part of the vision.
That could be, well, yeah. I mean, so I think you just got to take it slow. That's all.
I don't know what the vision is. It could, it could... Can you imagine though, if we, when we did Oviedo on the Park, when we had that 600 grand, or I thought it was 500 grand in front of us, you know what? It was a lot of money. We had, we had a million different issues to take care of at that time. We had city managers coming and going at that time, police chiefs coming and going, but we had, we were laser focused on Oviedo on the Park. And we spent all that money and now we got to cut the ribbon.
So let's read them. If we don't like them, we don't have to march on, right?
Correct.
That is correct. What are they, are these proposals, are they in books? Are they electronic?
Yes, sir.
They're in books?
Yes, sir.
So you're going to, big binders from everywhere.
The man's going to love paper.
Isn't that, don't they have them electronic? You still working on paper?
I believe they, there may be electronic versions. I'm not sure. I haven't seen them. I tried to keep myself out of them.
I'm just going to make, I'm just going to make one request. For me personally, I want electronic. I have Papalist my entire life and I don't want 20 binders. I would rather sit there and read 400 pages in a PDF than have to do that. So that's my only request.
Brian, I'm going with Keith on this one. Keith and I want books.
March on.
No, I don't want books. I do have a question for Lonnie, though. Is it appropriate for us to review these proposals with their cost proposals or should we just view their, their proposals for how they plan on doing the work? And then when we make the selection of the best one, then we work on the cost proposals?
So all of them the same response, so you can review it all. Okay. I know in the federal government, with A and E firms, we, we look at content first and then we discuss cost.
If we, if we were doing a request for qualifications, that would be the process. But in this case, and usually when you're doing requests for qualifications, you're just looking for the most capable firm. And it's more of a long-term type of proposal with these. It's just a one-time deal. And so that's why we went with the request for proposal and asked for them to cost as well.
Okay.
All right. I think we've just about beat that one all up. They're more projecting what they think the cost will be. Anything else from Mr. Cobb, Mr. Groot?
I just, just want to make sure I understand. Council will, is willing to serve as the evaluation committee?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get the process started.
Thank you. All right, moving along. Brian, we're up to your report.
Actually, may I only have two things. Tomorrow, the mayors and managers will be meeting at Siren Lake Park at 11:30. And also tomorrow at 1:30, you ask us to schedule a meeting between the owners of the golf course and the Twin Rivers HOA board, and we'll be doing that meeting tomorrow at 1:30.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. One thing on mayors and managers that I will suggest to everybody, please come by, have lunch, but then they expect it to be mayors and managers. They'll, they will ask you to leave. I'm just telling you. It's happened to other commissioners before, but come on down, join us for lunch. It is Panusus, I believe, is what's coming.
Where's the, where's the meeting from Twin Rivers and the golf course owners? Where's that taking place at?
In the chamber.
In here? Okay.
You coming?
Nope.
Going to avoid the chambers? I don't blame you.
I got them.
Keith, you're up.
Okay, couple items here. I'm going to start it off and say, "What a great day it was on Saturday." I know we'll all have something to say about it, but Drew, great job. Wear your life vest when you get on those swans, though.
Drew, a loving beyond.
Very, very good. We had a Calno meeting a week or so ago and the presentation was from Sanford and it was what I would consider a textbook model of how to do a citizens' academy. I don't know, Deputy Mayor Drago was interested in that when you first came on board. I've got a copy of it. I'll make it available. And it, it was just a great program that they got. I think they get 35 or 40 people twice a year going through that and it was very impressive on what they do with that. So a 10-week program. They don't charge for it, but we could work on that if we're, if we're interested as a council. I think every, every city that was in attendance is going to bring it back and take a look at it. Last but not least, League of Cities. The next session of the state legislature starts, I believe, in January of next year instead of March. So League of Cities is ramping up their policy committees. And I think I sent out an email that I was going to put my name in for the Transportation Committee. I'm also thinking of, as an alternative, putting in for the, the Energy and Climate Committee that studies stormwater and effects like that. So I'd encourage you guys, if you're interested in that kind of thing, put your, put your name in the hat and get involved with it. And that's all I got.
Great. Thank you. Mine, I'll, I will start off with Oviedo on the Park. I mean, everyone on staff just did an exceptional job. I mean, from top to bottom, in the middle, all the way across, I, we far exceeded, I think, the residents' expectations. I don't, I don't know what everybody thought was going on back there, but boy, when they got back there to see it, they were impressed. And the, and the best part about it was on Sunday when I drove through it twice, just because I couldn't stay away. Well, you walk it all the time now, but it was, it was packed all day Sunday. I mean, you know, I went through it in the morning. Debbie and I went back in the, in the afternoon. We brought the dog with us, let her go run around in the dog park for, well, she did two laps. She's 13 years old and just that I had enough. But you get the point. It was fun. We walked around the park with her and then we went back in the evening and we ran into the Cobb family doing the same thing, just strolling around. And it was still packed. So, you know, it is, it is just amazing and it was a lot of years of work by a lot of people, a lot of effort by us up here currently, a lot of patience from the residents. And boy, oh, boy, did it come through. But Drew, you, Councilman Britton was absolutely right, though. You know, the biggest question is, you know, what's next? You know, when, when's the next event? When's the next? So now that we've set their expectations all the way up here, now I got to raise it a bar. So I know you're working on stuff, but let's just keep it moving along because that, that thing is a smack dab home run. Second question I have is the tipsy ducks are going and we're getting four-seat swans. Did you get that all worked out yet today?
Not yet, but we're working on it.
You're working on that? Yeah, both, both of those leaked, right?
One did.
Right, the one that sank. Twice.
Yes, obviously.
Now, I do have to ask everyone on staff. I need you all to go to your manager level, staff folks tomorrow. I know there's a video of that somewhere because I saw all those orange staff shirts with their phones and I need that video because we're going to throw that up on YouTube and just watch it go viral. Nothing funnier than two men paddling a listing duck. We, they were throwing the water out and just watching it go kaplunk. So, huh? They're swine, swine, duck, whatever. No, those are the ones that look like ducks. They got flat bills. I don't know why, but...
They would have got chicken.
They would have sank earlier than the swans. Let me ask a question, you know, because that, that got brought up. Would you, would have wanted us to spend four times as much money? Four times. So it wasn't cheap. Barbecue blowout is this weekend. That is put on by the Chamber each year in conjunction with, I think it's Hope, it's either Hope or Helpful Hands, I think, this year.
Helpful Hands.
Yeah, Helpful Hands this year. Over at the mall, it starts Friday evening, 6:00 to 10:00. They've got, I think, 30, 30 or 33 barbecue teams are actually going to be vending this year. Music on the stage all night long that they have out there. And then Saturday afternoon is when all the competition will be occurring, music and so on and so forth. So that should be an exceptional event. I know they've talked to Drew about possibly moving that over to Oviedo on the Park. I think that would be a great addition that's over there. Lastly, I didn't want to bring it up while the expressway guy was here, but on those little comment cards, eliminate the toll between Redbug and 434. We have to prepare a letter. We'll put it in there with it because that's a dollar toll. That toll was never supposed to be there in the first place. They did a pilot program years ago where they were charging people a dime a mile. I think it was 30 cents with your pass, but then they considered a failure but never advertised it. a listing duck, we, they were throwing the water out and just watching it go kaplunk. So, huh?
Swan, probably.
They're swan, swan duck, whatever. No, those are the ones that look like ducks, they got flat bills, I don't know why, but...
They would've got chicken.
Uh, they would've sank, uh, earlier than the swans. Let me, let me ask a question, you know, because that, that got brought up. Would you, would've wanted us to spend four times as much money? Four times. So, it, it wasn't cheap. Um, barbecue blowout is this weekend. Uh, that is put on by the, the Chamber each year in conjunction with, uh, I think it's Hope, it's either Hope or Helpful Hands, I think, this year.
Helpful Hands.
Yeah, Helpful Hands this year. Over at the mall, it starts Friday evening, six to ten, they've got, uh, I think thirty, thirty or thirty-three barbecue teams are actually gonna be vending this year. Uh, music on the stage, uh, all night long that they have out there, and then Saturday afternoon is when all the competition will be occurring, music and so on and so forth. So that should be an exceptional event. I know they've talked to Drew about possibly moving that over to Oviedo on the Park. Uh, I think that would be a great addition that's over there. Lastly, I didn't wanna bring it up while the expressway guy was here, but on those little comment cards, eliminate the toll between Redbug and four-thirty-four. We, we have to prepare a letter, we'll put it in there with it, because that's a dollar toll, that toll was never supposed to be there in the first place. Uh, they did a pilot program years ago where they were charging people a dime a mile, I think it was thirty cents with your sun pass, but then they considered a failure, but never advertised it, so nobody...
Were you paying the toll now? You pay it when you get on Redbug?
Uh-uh.
When you get off four-thirty-four, you pay a dollar, and when you get on at four-thirty-four, you pay a dollar.
You can get...
Like, four-thirty-four?
Yeah. Yeah, you get on, you get on at Redbug for free, and then you pay the toll when you get off at four-thirty-four, and then you pay the toll when you get on at four-thirty-four and off at Redbug for free.
Four-thirty-four, and off, I get off at four-thirty-four, and there's not a toll there.
Right, yeah, but it's a dollar for that couple of miles, is all it is. And they, they, years and years and years ago, they did a pilot program where, you know, they'd read you going on, they put a reader down here on, uh, Redbug, it was just a little thing on the side of the road, they read you going on, and then when you got off, they only charged you a dime a mile.
Wasn't the original concept, they have a service road that people could use and move that?
Yep, they're supposed to be. We showed that at the State of the City, remember?
Yeah.
Want to ask them to build that? I don't have a problem with it.
No problem with that either.
Three hundred and twenty-six million dollars a year they bring in or something, they can build a service road, but...
People in Wellington might not like it, but...
Uh, that's back by the chief's house, he'll be okay.
Without sixty percent.
Oh, please, let's not start all of that. All right, end of my report. Councilman Schenck, you're up.
Uh, echoing of these thoughts, Oviedo on the Park was a great day, a great beginning. Uh, Drew and Parks and Rec, uh, everybody, Developmental Services, I forgot them the other day, uh, you know, they, they went through planning all this and, and approving all the plans, having to deal with Tom, I mean, that's just right there, you know? So, e- everybody did a great job. The event itself was phenomenal, the park itself was phenomenal. Looking forward to this weekend. Again, you know, we have another event coming up this weekend, uh, there, with the mi, with the, uh, veterans tribute.
Oh, thank you, yes.
And then, again, a Thursday, which is already getting play on Facebook, I saw, of, you know, come out this Thurs, come out Thursday the twenty-eighth, uh, for food trucks, so, uh, you know, I echo everybody else's comments, they, just the level already, people are now, it's open, so now they're starting to come, they've seen it once, and now they're starting to make it a destination to come walk around and see the stuff, so. We do have to keep that going, but, and that was phenomenal. That's it.
And if anyone's interested, it's a third of a mile around the lake. Uh, that's what it is, so three times around, you got yourself a mile. Uh, who are we up to? Councilman Henkin.
All right, just, uh, take three quick things. Um, the first thing, um, council, I talked to Robin about this a week or so ago, and the clinic folks were here tonight. Um, we really need to give some direction to expand the clinic hours. Robin has some in the budget, I guess like maybe ten hours, and maybe doing half of it now, because the, the rosy picture he painted tonight of, "It's running all good, when those girls are all working through their lunch, that's bad," and they do it every day. So, um, I don't know what the format for is, but I think, um, Robin's bringing us some expanded hours in the budget, but I don't think they can wait till October. So, maybe you all can call Robin and talk to her, and talk to Mr. Cobb during the week, but I think they need a few hours extra now. You just cannot have medical professionals working through their lunch, and they do it so, so good, and they never turn anybody down, and they're just amazing people over there, and I think we gotta help them out now, and I don't think they can wait till October. So, maybe give Robin a call during the week and see where we wanna go with that. You know, unless you all have thoughts now, you could, you could bring it, but...
Yeah, anything on papers showing what the issues are, if there's issues?
We've anticipated that for the October one, based on the March thirtieth meeting, adding about five hours, um, in October one, but we also cost out, beginning June or July this year, for five more hours in case it was presented to us, um, at some point in time due to the usage of the program. It's about fifty thousand to add five hours for staff support and for pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical needs, as well as the operating budget. Um, the HR director also presented an option of us maybe looking at a PA or MA, um, to work in conjunction, possibly, we haven't spoken with anyone else, but work in conjunction during the same hour. So, we're costing out some different things for the new year budget, but if we were to add five hours now, it'd be about fifty thousand, 'cause it would be a half a day, um, to one of the days that we already either are open at twelve, or, you know, at twelve, we'd open in the morning, or vice versa in the afternoon.
Could you bring us a graph, maybe, of appointments? You know, what, what he had up there was just very, you know, that was fifty thousand feet.
Yes, we can do that.
Could you, you know, that way we can really see what's going on.
Yeah, there's a couple times, uh, you go, Robin. Um, there was a couple times, like last week, if you just go on there and you look, you know, some, somebody's sick, it's like no appointments for a week. That's how busy they are, so, you know, council, take that serious, and let's try to send them some, some relief as they take care of everybody, and I think that, and they've never asked, it's my own observation, I've seen, I've just asked questions and whatever, so, um, just keep that in mind. Um, yeah, I mean, what else can you say about Oviedo on the Park? I mean, it was just really, for, for me, having, having been here for ten years now up here, I mean, that was a lot of work by not just the five of us, but our staff, but by many council members who have sat up here in these seats through, um, you know, let's say the last fifteen years or so. Um, this guy here, I paid him special tribute on, on Saturday, because he really, he had, he, he did sit through all those meetings. Councilman Schenck sat through many of them too, and, uh, but he's been here since day one, so he, he deserves a lot of credit, but...
Funny thing was, he would come sit in the back, nobody knew who the heck he was. I don't think he really lived here yet, you were looking.
I looked at him, I looked at him, and I sat, yeah, I sat through almost, I always say this way, I sat through more meetings than them, 'cause they couldn't go to some of those meetings, so I sat...
Yeah, some, and that is true, some of them, they, we weren't invited to.
But it is a, you know, there's just so many people, when you get something, you know, when I was out there, um, Saturday, the thing that made me most proud was when they were playing the National Anthem, and I was sitting there, and it was so good, that band, and I was just looking out over this park and just thinking, so many hands were, you know, were in this, and, you know, I love this city. I mean, I'm born and raised in New York, and New York's a great city, you know, several also up there, but I will tell you, there is really no place like Oviedo, and the people that work here, just the tireless effort, you know, guys swimming out into lakes rescuing people, I mean, it's just above and beyond, but I mean, it really was just an amazing day, and I'm just so happy. And I think we all went out there the next day, we, we couldn't stay away. Gina and I went out there too, we'd walk around, there's a couple hundred people out there, you know, at the twilight hour, and they're all having a great time, so I mean, that was just really amazing. And I will promise you one thing, you know, I, you know, I used to get teased up here, "We need Tom Jones, and we need big players at that amphitheater." I will promise you that I am working on having an amazing concert out there with people that have won Grammys and major awards. We're not playing around out there, it's in, we're working on it, and I'm not gonna tell you a little bit more, but I wanna whet the appetite.
You, you can be our, our event coordinator.
That amphitheater is gonna bring, is gonna bring, is gonna bring some, uh, some, some many memories out there, and I can't wait to see the faces on the first one. Well, we have some other ones out there, but I'm, we're working on a big one out there, so hopefully it'll come through, uh, maybe in the September timeframe, but I think we're gonna, we're gonna program that well and make people very proud, and, man, what's Oviedo doing tonight? You know, I don't know if we're getting, you know, like Kiss or nothing, Mayor, but we're gonna have some, we're gonna have some major names that you all know, so...
I'll go, I'll go down and talk to them at Rock and Brew.
He, he'll probably pull it off, but, uh, but anyway, so, great job by everybody, and, uh, you know, I just can't see, can't wait to see what's next. Uh, I know that hospital will be coming soon, I hope you never have to use it, but it'll be nice that it's here. Um, we're really becoming...
Full service.
Yeah, we're really becoming a place that you're just really proud of, and, you know, if I, if I didn't ever sit up here again, the work that we've all done, I mean, that, that, opening that park, which just really made you feel good. So, hopefully, we got some more stuff. Um, you know, the one vision I can tell you is in fifty years, he'll still be sitting here, so you'll be in good hands. So, you know, that's good, so, but, well job, uh, job well done by everybody, and, uh, that's all we got.
We solved your budget problem, because he'll be your events coordinator, and he's already budgeted, so...
There you go.
You're all set.
I do it for free.
Now, Drew, I gotta ask a question, has the splash pad, has the, have the pumps turned off at all? Because every time I go through, that thing is just running, those kids are jacking.
Well, I, I, it's been, uh, it's been, it's been this day, all day today, again, playing around with school this morning, uh, you know, quite a few, now that splash pad, everything.
And I, you had mentioned, you're, you're gonna look at some shade structures here and there, and I mean, it's all budgeting and time, we know that. How about the rotary clock, do we get power back to it yet today?
We're getting on that, we were having to...
It's, it's stuck at a quarter of twelve. Deputy Mayor, you are up.
I was gonna say, uh, you know, I, to piggyback on one...
Can I skip over?
No, no, you didn't. Just, I, I just asked her if I could say, you know, to piggyback on, on Councilman Henkin, you know, it's, um, hearing, uh, Orlando Concert Band play the National Anthem, just to open up that...
Amazing. The first performance on that stage.
Was the National Anthem, and that's a good thing to know, you know, and, and it was great when I walked down, I, you know, my kids, they were like, "Yeah, we heard it out on the balconies and stuff, and you could hear, you know, we, we heard the National Anthem being played." So, it was great that, that they play, you know, the first thing played on that stage was the National Anthem, so, and, and they played it well.
They were good, yeah.
Yes. I, I agree with everything they said. The day was just fantastic. It was, um, as the mayor said, it, I felt like it was Christmas morning, when I woke up Saturday morning.
And we got to dance to Thriller together.
We did, we got to dance.
That's ridiculous.
Yes. The mayor was incognito.
The children's...
He had a wig on, but it was fun. There was a lot of kids having a good time, dancing, and, um, that DJ PJ...
DJ, EJ, he lives in Elephantwood.
He really had the kids, like, and the grownups involved, and dancing and teaching them to dance, it was a lot of fun. The whole day was just fantastic. But other than that, I know the, the Center Lake Park is gorgeous. It is probably one of the nicest parks that I have seen in central Florida. I think it's really gonna put us on the map. I've heard nothing but good remarks about it, it, very family-oriented, um, lots for people to do. And I think that there were so many people involved in bringing this all together that are unrecognized, you know, we have a lot of our staff, I think the whole city was involved to get, to make this what it was. And I'm, I know we're all appreciative for all the work that, that was put into it, and to make the ceremony, of course, was very nice. Um, I do have good news, a, the Oviedo Women's Club is going to bring Great Day in the Country there in two thousand and sixteen.
Nice.
Oh, good job.
Yeah. They've already decided, and they're working on it now, so it's...
Is this the first Drew is hearing of it? Please tell me, yes.
No, I, no, he knew, yeah. So, it, they, they're gonna be leaders.
That's wonderful.
Yep, it is really wonderful news, yep, so I think it's gonna...
No wedding that day.
(laughing) Um...
Sorry, I'm scared.
Yeah. Then I wanted to just say, congratulations to Drew and Lieutenant Beavers and Mrs. Britton for graduating from Leadership Seminar last Friday. It was very nice, we're very proud of you. Um, it was a great, great class to go through, great thing. Um, but I do wanna bring up the workshop on June eighteenth. I'm unable to, to make it on that evening, I, it's a Thursday evening, and I know we went through this whole thing about doing Thursdays. I know we changed one to a Wednesday night before, would we be able, would you be consider, would you consider changing the eighteenth to the seventeenth for that workshop? I think it's about the LDC, or is it...
Well, that would actually work better for me, 'cause I have a wedding that weekend. Oh, yeah, my daughter's getting married.
Oh, yeah.
It's one with me.
What is that, the seventeenth?
The seventeenth.
The Wednesday. Yeah, that would be fine.
You okay with that, Keith? How's your schedule looking?
Uh, hang on.
Calno or anything?
Yeah, yeah, that we can. Seventeenth, we need to bring that up. When would you be...